So Calpers has put into their new actuarial statements for member agencies those what-if scenarios. What if it's only five, what if it's four, what if it's nine?
Seven. I mean, I'm sure they'll start with seven. They're at seven and a half now.
So, but they'll give us that range, knowledgeable enough to know that information and be able to, you know, decide to tell us.
Well, I just think decisions ought to be based on this kind of realism. I mean, with negotiating for the changes in the pensions for the safety personnel, did everybody know that pretty soon that 12.6 is going to be 13.7 and 14.8 would step it up over?
So it'll be 18% in five years compared to 12% now.
And the safety, well, most of our employees are safety officers.
Yeah.
They'll do what?
The safety, where they're starting at 25, 26.
Is that only going up 1%?
Yeah.
Everything gets one point one percent.
Even after those 5%, 5.6%, 5% each point increases, say it properly, I guess, we're still less than where we were.
Than where we were two years prior to the unfunded portion, the site funds.
Yeah.
Yeah, and also too, what will happen is not only the increases will happen, but, you know, our rates could go down as well because of the way the market happens, whatever that happens. You know, 2012, we just got the actuarials. 2013, if it's another good year, that adds to your funding status portion, whether on the investment return. So, and that's a big component of it, is the investment return. As more comes in, your liabilities, your cost of your member contribution, that percentage, could go down. It could reduce. And if it goes up, it could go up less than what it could have gone up in regards to the investment.
Well, you'll have a clearer picture a year from now, so I don't think that's the question.
That's the issue.
At least that's why you deferred having actuarial come in, other meeting and do that. We had talked, had those discussions, had the first time.
Not to do it, to do it with the rest of it, yeah.
Perfect. Before we move on to item number two, I want to make sure we don't have all the comments. Seeing no other comments, we'll go ahead and close this item and move over to item number two. The reserve and handsome alternatives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we should the council, you have the 21 page leisure meeting material. Basically, we wanted to start out by saying we've got a lot of public opportunity for participation in the budget process. We've got at least seven or eight meetings up here on the screen where the public's able to participate in the big decisions that the council are having to grapple over the next few months. Beginning with this study session on March 5th, where we're the initial foray into revenue enhancement alternatives. This will show back up again to the council on May 7th study session, where we'll hopefully have a narrowed list from this meeting to tackle in more detail. We begin the actual budget kickoff on May 21st at the regular meeting, and then on the June 1st study session, we'll have part two of that, as well as the parcel tax discussion. And on June 18th, that's where you actually adopt a budget at a public hearing and set the parcel tax rate. But you can still have, you know, discussions at the public. So you've got seven or eight times the public can be involved. This is going to be up on the website. We're going to send out news flashes.
Well, we have a finance committee on the 12th of March.
Yeah, the number to participate.
But that's, but what we just discussed, item one, we come after we set the budget. Once we decide what we're going to do, then we can make what we did this past year. Okay, so we allocate it as part of the unreserved general fund after we set the budget.
Exactly.
And so, and the discussions for all these other things that are about to come are, we don't have to have a clear roadmap by June. We just, these are available to us at any time, almost any time. We have steps we have to take.
Right, they're more of an awareness issue out of the council.
Yeah, it was great, it was a great presentation.
So, revenue alternatives. You've got a number of revenue alternatives that are out there in this report, and Robert and I aren't going to go through the report in any stretch of detail. But some of them, we can adjust. Many of them, many of them cannot. And so there's limited amounts of flexibility for the town. But this is just a list of some of the ones that we discussed in the report. You've got tax revenue alternatives such as property taxes, sales tax, business license tax, utility users tax, transient occupancy tax, real property transfer tax. And of course, we all know the property tax, or the parcel tax, right, excuse me. The, of that list.
Transit occupancy, how can Atherton take advantage of that?
I talked about that in the report, and that would require a land use change in order to allow hotel motel holiday inn or bed and breakfasts.
Which we have.
Like the Atherton Inn.
Well, and well, there are other ones along Atherton Avenue that I've heard.
Yeah, so, but that has a hurdle connected to it, and it's a huge policy decision. And it probably wouldn't raise a significant amount of revenue for the town. So, of that list up there, the only one you really can't do much about is the property tax. You can, some of them will produce more revenue than the others, but property taxes, we're just, we can't change. They are what they are, and we get what we get, and hopefully it keeps going up.
Well, there may be a change coming down the pipe, but I think if it's going to be on commercial property, and we don't have it, so.
Correct. Very likely to track us up.
But, but we have seen an increase in our property tax revenue of 8% over the last year. And as long as we see these pre Prop 13 properties turn over and people building new houses, we're going to see continued growth. Now, that certainly, we should not expect that to continue forever. It will not. But it has grown, and once it changes, it's not going back down.
It could. It can.
It can.
Because they reassess everything. Once you get a dip, they reassess all the property, not just the property that's sold.
Just as it did in 2008, 2009, but that has now come back up. So, I think from a planning perspective, there's, there is some property tax change that's happening. We just don't have the control over it.
Correct, correct. So of those tax revenue alternatives, taxes always require a vote. All of them will require an election. Some of them require other hurdles, like as Councilmember Lewis mentioned, the COT tax would require a change to zoning. The real property transfer tax requires a change to charter citizenship. Those would also be, you know, huge public participation opportunities. This report isn't intended to look at actual numbers. We don't know the numbers. We want to narrow it down to really focus that effort on which ones are viable from a policy perspective, which ones really aren't. But we took some swags, and, you know, you can look at a comparison of these. The UUT could provide us with some substantial revenue, as could the real property transfer tax. The parcel tax, you've got to compare that against those other two. We get 1.8 million from the parcel tax, so looking at those dollar signs going up, they're more than the parcel tax would provide.
Oh, so there is a, okay. One dollar sign equals how much?
Minimal revenue enhancement to five dollar signs.
Just a scale, yeah. Okay, it's like an initial thing.
Yes, the five-star rating.
You know, everybody is aware that, you know, the users tax and the real property transfer tax, that's not a straight-line revenue source. It will fluctuate year over year, and so it will be very hard to budget accordingly and project the revenue of those taxes.
No, but you should be able to trend it over a period of time and make a, you know, estimate. You know.
Consider that one for budget.
Well, certainly, there's going to be less variability with the utility user tax than there would be with the real property transfer tax.
Unless the objective of a utility users tax is to get people to use less utilities, and so then it effectively goes down.
Oh, that's possible.
So, with the utility users tax and what is currently in place, wouldn't it be a reasonable approach to wean off as we, because obviously it would take us a while to figure out what our utility users tax income is going to be over a duration of time, based on the percentages that we actually come up with? So that we can wean off the property.
The parcel tax?
Parcel tax, and then parallel it with figuring how much we're getting on the utility tax. And then eventually one may even wean off completely, and maybe we just, you know, go with the utility tax route.
But, but, you know, on the utility tax, as well as the real estate property tax, you know, these things that are variable, are very similar to what we did on the rate setting to trash. Okay, so yes, there's variability. People are going to mind rate carts and those type of things. But you make a trend, and you put it in the variability, and then you, you know, peg it. So, it's not, I think it's a reasonable, those are reasonable things for us to look at with regards to, and they would support a budgeting process, a fairly robust budgeting process. It's the same as any company. They don't know how much they're going to sell every year, but yet they make budgets, and they make their projections, and they're held accountable on Wall Street, you know, very much accountable on making those numbers. So, I think, you know, many of these things are, you know, our utility taxes and the franchise taxes, we're already paying some of those. We include those. We should probably understand how much they are generating today and what's been the history. And, and other towns, what they're charging, and seeing maybe what the market might bear.
Yeah, so, to that point, on page 21 of his report, he's got the chart with the other cities. But it says Meadow Park, it's a 2.5% telephone, 3.5% remainder excluding sanitation. And so, that only generates 1.1 million, $1,150,000. And Meadow Park is much larger than Atherton as far as utility users. They've got commercial, they've got, you know, many more residential. So I don't see where that's a correlative, you know, it's not compelling to me.
That's a good question, right. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and I have a little concern, or Florida has a little concern about the property tax, because Sam Dade was the only one in the county that has a transfer tax for properties.
The real property tax.
Real property tax enhancing. And my concern is that, one, we don't have much of a market. And I know that a lot of people don't like the path for science in Samdale. I would be very nervous on jeopardizing what we're currently relying on, which is the increase of property building revenue and so on and so forth coming from the nice turnover people from Prop 13, the new people coming in. But that seems to be a nice resource, and I, it scares, it would scare me a lot.
What concerns me about the real estate property tax, transfer tax, is it requires a change to the charter city. And I know that there's a lot of people who think that that's the only way to go. I have a very, I'm very hesitant about that. I think that it puts too much power in the hands of a council. You never know over the current time, you know, who will be in council in charge. I think that the general law city, we, we don't, we, we're not hurt by a lot of the stuff that mandates that are sent down from the state for general law cities, because we don't have development, we don't have commercial. And I think that's one reason why a lot of cities want to get out of general law cities into charter. So I, you know, I'm very leery about changing to a charter city just for the sake of a real property transfer tax, which is very fluctuating. And I think that with, as Vice Mayor DeGoye said, they, it's, the development, the turnover does not have to last forever. There's, there's a.
So I think on the charter city, I think that the charter city having self-rule allows you to decide what laws you wish to have applied. I mean, there's something that we can't get out of, but what laws we want to have applied and what ones we don't. And, which is a smart way to go. It doesn't, the council cannot change, you know, just do things willy-nilly without a vote. Okay, and once we set the charter, we choose to change the charter, it's going to go back for a vote. So it does have public input. You know, any taxes that are enacted through a charter city have to be approved, the same as we do anywhere. And, and again, it does allow us to be more competitive with our procurements. So we can, and I realize that the laws are changing a little bit, but we can do more competitive bidding as opposed to QBS type of bidding, which is, you know, mandated, which we are, we just talked about how much money we're going to be spending on capital projects. And so if we can get more, if we can save 10% or 5% on some of those procurements, that's a lot of money. And so, you know, we define what charter is. We define, you know, we can make a charter that says we're going to follow only, everything that we're doing today except for this or this. And we decide that, and it goes out to the population after workshops, and, and then a vote, a population vote. The council, it's not up to the council to decide what we're doing. It's up to the.
Are these all the same to the point of view of deductibility from federal state income taxes? Because I always feel, I'm concerned about the, the parcel tax, because half of that's going to be taken care of by Jerry Brown.
Right, right.
Well, most people lose it in their alternative minimum tax. They eliminate their deduction anyway, so they don't have, they don't get any deduction for the property taxes.
They don't get any deduction for the property taxes per se. You can get deductions for other gifts and donations to, we're on a 501(c)(3), but there's another designation for a city. You can't get a deduction for a straight gift to a city, but property taxes are not gifts. They feel like it, they just don't.
But each, each person is different, but by all, if you make over 170,000, something like that, you lose all your property tax benefits.
All right, George, so, there's, those are the various types of tax revenue alternatives. The other ones that we talked about were benefit assessment districts. These are districts that would require, you know, Prop 218 approval processes. You could set one up for a streetlight district, a bike bed improvement district, a maintenance improvement district. And we've got the Atherton Channel District. We could set up others to address different issues. All you do is you, you cordon off, you have a report that says, where's the benefit? How much is attributable? Each particular parcel goes out to a lot of residents within those areas. And you can assess maintenance, operations, costs connected to those improvements as well. Then there's fees and charges. Our fees are presently charged, presently charged at an appropriate level, so that we made some conscious decisions to not set fees higher than certain levels to encourage people to come in and work with the planning department. And then there are things that we're not actually collecting for, such as alarm monitoring fee or false alarm fee. There's some vendor permits and things like that that we're not currently collecting that we should invest. And then, of course, there's a road impact fee, which under Prop 26 is really no longer potentially a fee. It's really a tax. So it's a whole different process to go through for that.
Well, what is that process?
A vote.
A vote, not Prop 218?
No, a vote of, like any other tax.
So to implement a road impact fee, we need to run the dollar just like the utility tax or?
Yeah, and Prop 26, most people don't get Prop 26 yet, because it makes Prop 218 look pretty kind. Prop 26 says every source of revenue that comes to us is presumed to be a tax, unless it falls within one of seven exemptions. One of those exemptions is if you charge an individual a fee. If Kerry has a, wants to add something to his house, and he comes in and he needs to pay a planning fee. The fee can't exceed what it costs us to provide that government service to him, but that fee is exempt from being a tax. Now, road impact fee, I'm pretty good at wordsmithing things to make them fit the mold. I can't figure out how you can charge a fee, a government service, to somebody that's driving down the road. I mean, an empty dump truck, a full dump truck, a huge dump truck, a little tiny pickup truck full of sand. Who gets stuck with paying a road impact fee? The way it was before, it was a percentage based on the cost of the building that you were doing. That's clearly a tax now under Prop 26. So, depending on what we were trying to do, if you wanted to have an overweight vehicle fee, you can impose that. But then you're also going to have to be out there with some way of measuring the weight of the vehicle that you're then going to cite for not having the fee, I mean, for paying the fee.
Can I ask a little question, Bill? So, road impact fee, if you think about it, it's, for example, an undeveloped site that in fact is being then subsequently developed, i.e. a single-family residence. You have impacted a singular use. I think the intent on the road impact fee probably was more of the, we're building condominiums, you're bringing 900 new cars here every day, thus the impact. But I think that the impact fee that most residents would think that they would want implemented would be the fact that the duration during construction, for example, is trucks are carrying up the roadway, trucks are, you know, you know, coming in 20 times a day, thus creating more of an impact to the infrastructure.
It is a problem, because state law says you cannot put a tax on trucks that are using the roads, because they already pay an extra tax to the state of California that's supposed to triple down to us. We do have the ability to, for instance, charge a trench cut fee. So if you cut into the street to put a water line around, that you can charge a fee for, because we have to inspect it, we have to make sure it's all compacted and things like that. But just coming up with a fee based on development, interestingly enough, and I'm not going to be a proponent or an opponent, but if you were a charter city, the city of San Francisco, which is a charter city and county, has adopted something called a transit fee or a commuter fee. And so anytime you build a new structure that could make people drive to and from it, they charge you a tax. And so those kinds of, they're no longer fees, but those kinds of taxes, subject to voter approval, you can, you can implement. But road impact fee, the way it was before, which just said, a big truck's going to tear up our road, and therefore we're going to charge a fee for every construction project, you know, based on valuation, you're going to hit an approximation, I suppose, of who's going to use big trucks and who isn't. But those are probably not going to fly after Prop 26.
But there is a way.
My question is, I understand that for each development project, but what if you said, there's two kinds of trucks that feed up our roads. There's cement trucks, and there's trucks that are full of dirt. They're either bringing it in or taking it out. And in either case, they put a big burden on the roads. And, and Public Works has, you know, talked about that. So could you put a fee on the number of cement trucks or large dirt-carrying trucks? And you could be specific about what that is? Or would that fall into the category of trucks that have already paid a fee?
It's probably, probably trucks that have already paid a tax, because we've got to start using the word right. A fee is a government service. We provide them, and they give us money for providing that service. I don't see that with cement trucks, unless we're out there counting the cement trucks somehow.
Why, you count the cement trucks?
But we don't have anybody on staff that's assigned to count cement trucks.
But they'd have a permit to put cement, to dump cement.
And there is a problem, because it's kind of like science when you say you're going to start regulating the content of science. Well, I can tell you right now, you're not. And the problem with a tax on large construction-type trucks, they're already paying the tax to the state, and the state says, because of that, nobody else can make them pay another similar tax. Same with financial institutions. You can't tax a bank, because they pay by California constitution. They pay a tax to the state, and they're exempt from paying us a business license fee, for instance.
But if I could interject though, there are ways, the way we were doing it in the past can't become any longer. So if we're going to look at a way to address road impacted vehicles on the street, we'll have to figure out another vehicle to do that. And if that's a priority, we can look into that.
Not a cement truck, another vehicle.
All construction-related vehicles will get you around focusing on a particular type.
Correct.
I'd like to raise a possible fees or whatever for consideration. It has to do with Holman Palmer Park. And here's kind of what I, my feeling is, if you look at the park from east to west, you have dog programs, you have Kerry's House with lessons, you have a preschool, you have lacrosse, you have soccer, a little league tennis, okay? I do not believe that most of that park used is by Atherton residents. I firmly believe that 50 to 70% of them is probably used by Meadow Park residents.
You can't be, you cannot designate Meadow Park just a non-resident.
No, wait a minute, Bill.
Anyway, what appears to be two issues. The first is, we have possibly created a CB, i.e. community benefit for the city of Meadow Park, which we have not been compensated in any way, shape, or form. Item one. Two, each of these programs, and I remember from me on Park and Rec, we did charge some out-of-area fees. I happen to swim at Burgess every day. I pay a daily fee, a monthly fee. I pay a monthly fee, but I get a 12% surcharge because I'm out of area. So my thinking is, if we took a look at all of these programs, including the school, Little League, pick one, see when a kid signs up, if they're going to participate on an Atherton field, they pay an out-of-area charge, just like I do at Meadow Park, which I was told by the people at the pool is dictated by the Meadow Park City Council. It's not a fee that the pool makes up. So it's just for consideration. I don't know. We've got hundreds of thousands of people using the park, and if you have a $2 on everybody, average, you know, you've got maybe two, $2 signs up there. So just for consideration, not now, but again, and the CB is an interesting, I thought, interesting theory. I don't know, who wants to approach the Meadow Park City Council and say, hey, give me the money?
What would be the organizational system? Sending the people here, and they would have to be collecting it?
Somehow, again, that's, that's a mechanism. I was, this was just conceptual, because as I was paying my dues the other day, and I realized how much the out-of-area fee was pooled, which is.
Who you paid?
Paid for, he goes to the city of Meadow Park. I, you know, write to.
City Hall?
No, I write to check to the Burgess Swim Center, but that's contracted on Meadow Park. The vehicle over there, this is dictated by the council, which pays out a very good fee. Like, did I get a kid back, I get a senior discount. And just for the record, I want to let everybody know, I'm the guy who loved to hate on Prop 13.
Just to be clear, it is legally possible to charge non-residents, or you could create categories for other categories, a different fee for use of city property. That's one of the seven exemptions under Prop 26. Use of your property, renting it out for an event or something. Sky's the limit. There is no, it doesn't have to be what it costs us to provide that service or less. It's market value, and you can charge what you want, and you can differentiate to non-residents if you see fit.
Meadow Park does charge it on other programs. I asked, I don't know which specifically ones there are, but they can charge for other programs. So it's just a potential possible fee running the source from.
Palo Alto, Plato Park.
Yeah, exactly.
Clear?
It's like the hotel tags, infect somebody else.
Great segue. Franchise fees is another one, and we'll get to the segue in just a moment. Increasing the solid waste franchise beyond our current 10%, up to 15% or whatever. That would net us approximately $150,000 a year beyond our current franchise revenue. But again, it's coming out of a single pocket, which we'll talk about in a second. Fines and penalties, increase the fines for parking violations of municipal code, road enforcement, construction time limit, those are single-dollar sign items. Rents, park use and rentals, charging separate fees for residents versus non-residents. We do charge separate fees under the new Gator and Badena situation. There are, there is a surcharge for non-residents versus resident. Residents get a discount. We've already implemented that for anybody that rents a settlement park. And then gifts, one-time, single-purpose gifts for the town. Those types of revenues are, again, one-time, single-purpose, and we would account them for ongoing operational costs.
But on park use, you just charge for rentals. I'm talking about when a kid signs up to play lacrosse and his fee's 40 bucks, we get $4 or so.
But we negotiate with the.
We have to put that in the contract with the agency.
Well, I know, I was chair parking rec, I understand.
No, no, I understand. I think that's a good idea. Then we would just put the accounting in the, you know, we would audit it possibly, but we could put that in the contract that says that they have to do that, collect it, show us the benefits.
Yeah, and look at Meadow Park and see what the percentage is. Like I said, on the day rates, like 5%, the monthly rate's like 4%. I don't know, we'll use a gymnastics shirt or whatever.
George, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
On fines, fees, et cetera, et cetera. The conviction of a misdemeanor or fraction committed in town limits, who sets that fee?
It's a mail schedule, it's set by the court, and we get usually like 7% of it, so it's irrelevant as a fee.
But we can set a citation amount higher than what it presently is. But we can set a citation amount higher than what it presently is or...
Parking, parking and municipal code violations, by the way, we try to enforce as many of those as we can with administrative citations because we get 100% of that back.
So one thing to keep in mind here is for the most part, one big pocket, yours. So most of these revenue alternatives we're talking about, because we don't have a commercial sector, we don't have hotels and motels and we don't have a tourist industry, it's coming from the residents. You know, there are some of these fees that we'll, we can charge that will come from non-residents, such as the park use fees, such as, you know, property transfer tax, which ultimately could come from the buyer potentially. Or, you know, pretty much, yeah.
I have a question, similar to the road impact. I mean, we have several private schools in the area that bring substantial amount of traffic into the area, which, you know, the council has looked at, issues, transportation issues. Can we assign a fee to those schools for out-of, non-Atherton residents for, for important road usage or traffic impact?
What service are we providing then that we don't provide everybody else?
Education.
We're not providing a service, we're providing them road protection.
You can't charge a fee unless you provide a service. You could provide, you could tax them. You could come up with some, you know, very focused school commuter tax at some time. I mean, it would be a lot easier to do that if you were a charter city because as a general law city, I've got to go find some category of taxation that's allowed under the, the state codes and that one probably isn't there.
Okay, but we do do police services. They're on the list every, every week that, or every month that, that the chief gives us. There was a call of this one, I think Sacred Heart is the one that regularly is like one or zero. But there are stuff, there is stuff over at college, there is stuff happening over at the Mellow, Mellow School. So, and, and majority of the children that attend those schools are non-Atherton residents.
And the majority of the students attending schools, the private schools, aren't police problems, is my guess. And then even those that are, if you look at Prop 218 especially, it exempts all these utility, public services that were supposed to be provided that are paid for by, quote, property tax. Problem is, people that live in other jurisdictions aren't paying core property tax. And to be fair, neither are the private schools because they're using taxes there. So it, it is a good question, but it's one that's probably going to be difficult to hang something on.
Although, yeah, go ahead.
I meant, I'm sorry, in, in the same zone, isn't it enhanced? Property tax pays for basic service levels. Enhanced service levels that are often required because of the additional requirements schools, you know, because of traffic, more kids are driving, which they weren't driving when all this went into play. That, I think, is the focus, it's that narrow enhanced service we're providing.
Or, or you could even expand it. They all have athletic programs, so we could do something that brings extra people to the, above and beyond the students, if you don't think we could do something on a student basis for like football games at Mellow College or lacrosse games or whatever at Sacred Heart. I mean, there is, there is...
Some have tried admissions taxes. Admissions taxes are legal, but only if they apply to everybody in that same category across the board.
I think we're treading more into the water, though, of an impact fee. For what the schools have on the community, impact to traffic and things like that. An impact fee can be done as part of development. And along those lines, we could get revenue from the private schools to address...
Are those private schools 501(c)(3)'s?
Most of them are.
Sure.
Education is...
I mean, I think we can kind of nitpick each one of these different things, but the reality is there's three buckets that come close to providing the town with the money that it currently receives from the parcel tax. And those are the parcel tax, the property transfer fees, which would require changing to be a charter city, and the utility user tax, which is something we have to put to a vote to the public, just like we put the parcel tax to a vote to the public.
And the charter city goes to the vote.
And, and charter city, I understand, goes to a vote to the public. I guess my thinking about that is, well, people are used to the parcel tax. This is an accepted thing. We just passed it through. We didn't pass it with as large of a margin as we did in the prior four years, but I don't think that there was as much of a campaign either. But the real issue for me is that our property tax have gone, has gone up 8% in each of the last two years and this is a large number. And, you know, we have to sort of see how much that's going to go up. If that happens to continue to go up for the next three or four years, we may not need to worry about all these large buckets. But this, once that tax goes up, except for these recession dips like we experienced in 2008, '09, it sets a new base. And that base goes up a small amount, 1% a year.
When you say going up 8%, you mean the town's revenue?
The town's piece.
Not their personal.
No, no, not my personal, but the town's piece because there were people that had a property tax base of $1,000 to $3,000. And when that property is sold and a new house is built, it's a, you know, $100,000 tax base. And it's really a significant change.
There were some anomalies last year also.
No, I, I'm not even looking at those very large properties that transferred. But when, you know, you have 40 to 50 new properties there, you see, there's a real change. And that's, let's face it, that's, that's one of the real assets that we have as Atherton that you don't experience in communities that don't have the same parcel size and, and investment that new purchases can make.
Look, I would say you're right. In the current real estate climate in this town, the houses are, there's still a rule isn't any increase. I mean, there's just, there's lots of cash sales at big numbers and that's a trend. And the current inventory situation should continue for some period of time. And I think that's some of the tenement-wide, some...